Okay.
Okay.
Got it? Okay.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and my name is Tommy Kilgore, President of the Transylvania Branch of the NAACP, and I welcome you to our Candidates Forum. This evening, we have with us candidates Marty Griffin, Paul Cooper, Chris Weiner, and unfortunately, Tanya Dalton will not be able to be with us this evening. We welcome you here today, this evening, and at this time, I would turn it over to Alice Wellborn, who will be our moderator. She is a former school board member. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. It's really nice to have you here. I'm going to go over the ground rules real quickly with the candidates. Respect the allotted time. Two minutes for your self-introduction. One minute to respond to questions or comment on an issue. Two minutes for closing statements. The timekeeper will hold up a hand like this when you have thirty seconds left, and a hand like this when your time is up. When your time is up, complete your sentence and stop talking. No personal attacks. Be cordial. Offer evidence to defend your positions rather than repeating party line dogma. This is going to be a moderated discussion. So the goal is to have an informed discussion, not to have an argument. The moderator, I, will ask a question, and then ask or ask the candidates to comment on an issue or something they have said publicly that's been in the paper. If you wish to follow up on the comment of another candidate, when everyone's had a chance to talk and answer, then please raise your hand and wait to be recognized. And if you're recognized, you'll have one minute for your follow-up. I control the discussion and decide when to move on to the next question or issue. And Tommy and I will work together to ensure that all three candidates get approximately equal time during our time together. So we'll start with our self-introductions. Mr. Weiner, you have two minutes to introduce yourself.
Thank you, Alice. My name is Chris Weiner. I am the Republican candidate, one of the two Republican candidates running for school board. My positions are really simple. I am interested in making sure that our students have the best educational opportunities allotted for them to ensure that they are informed citizens, that they are prepared to enter either an academic space as a continued education or to enter into a trade space, again, as a continued education, or into the workforce directly as they desire. My interests are focused on making sure that our schools are performing at the best possible level. And that's really all I've got from an introduction at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good if they could hear me. Hello, and many thanks to the NAACP for sponsoring this forum and giving us all the opportunity to talk to you. I kind of want to first tell you that I'm a candidate that brings a different perspective to our existing board. My background in mental health, business, and finance offers a different level of insight. I believe strongly in the concepts of compassion, cooperation, collaboration, and compromise. These skills should be the core of all decision-making organizations. Talking without listening or not trying to see through the eyes of others are qualities that are obstacles to good policymaking. I know adversity as a fourteen-year survivor of pancreatic cancer. I have fought for my life for two years. So when the eyes open in the morning, it's the beginning of another really good day. I'm against most issues that do nothing but create controversial conflicts. And our teachers have been overworked and underpaid for decades, not centuries, placing more pressure on them by making them fearful of guns in classrooms, parents and cameras spying on them, and not getting anything in return is unfair. We are not only losing our teachers and the few mental health professionals and nursing professionals in our schools, but if you look at the colleges, there are fewer and fewer students choosing education as a degree. Picture the impact of this now, and then picture the impact of that ten years from now. It is ludicrous to think that teachers and staff choose this profession for the purpose of indoctrination. Our students spend the majority of their days in school being educated by devoted people whose primary job is to teach our children how to be informed and well-rounded members of their society. I look forward to letting you know more about me tonight and to gaining your confidence and support. And again, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Paul.
I'm Marty Griffin, running for the Transylvania County School Board. I want to thank the National Association for Advancement and other people for putting this forum together. I'm a lifelong resident of Transylvania County. I taught thirty-one years in our school system. My wife Carson worked with the Department of Social Services. I have two daughters, one's a principal at a physical forest, Amanda, and her husband Andrew have two grandsons, have another daughter teaches math at Bivard Middle School. And I've personally spent thirty-one years in the school system as a teacher, as a coach, and as an athletic director. I taught fifteen years at Rossmann High School, Middle School, taught fifteen years at Bivard High School, well aware of the needs at both schools, both parts of the county. The other thing that's very important to me is there are three things I tell everybody. We must make our kids safe in school. We must make sure that we feed them and take care of them health-wise, and then education comes easy. It's hard to teach a child in the morning who's not been in a safe situation and not had anything to eat. The other thing I want to mention is that our policies on the school board are directed through the state legislature and the state school board. Anything that we do, we're directed from the government of the state of North Carolina. The other thing I would like to mention is that our school board has worked well together. I'm just going to tell you a little story. I was at a state school board association. I serve on the board of directors on the legislative committee. There was only ten school systems across the state that reported a complete board vote. Transylvania County was one of them. Every member on that board answered a survey, concerned what we need to do for legislative decisions for the next two years. That makes me proud of us. Even though we may have some disagreements at times, we all have our hearts in the right place, and that's taking care of the kids. And you'll hear this over and over. It's the kids at camp. Thank you for having us the opportunity to be here tonight.
We'll start the moderated discussion now. Now, okay. We'll start our moderated discussion now. Other than, other than the school bond projects and other capital needs, because we'll get to that later, what else would be your top priority as a school board member? And why? Remember, you have one minute to answer. Mr. Griffin?
One thing that I'm constantly concerned about, as we mentioned earlier, is the safety of our kids. We have SO, SROs in every school, which is a plus. The sheriff has been very helpful with us during this time period. Again, I mentioned the feeding of our students. It's very important that we are able to take care of them. The ones that qualify for meals, we will make sure they get those meals. The other thing that is a concern with me is the salary structure, not just for teachers, but for all employees. I know that we cannot do a lot of this locally as a school board, but it's our job to make sure we keep this in the front, that we need to take care of our personnel. You cannot have school if you don't have the staff to do what needs to be done each day. Thank you.
This is hard. It is hard to keep unmuted, folks. Okay, Mr. Weiner, would you let us know your top priority as a school board member other than the capital?
Yes, as I said in my intro, my number one focus is on the performance of our students in the school system and having a school system that performs to the degree of our investment. Most recently, I saw the Tea Times article that our schools were performing at A, B, C, D, and F level, which, given our investment, quite surprises me. Obviously, mask shutdowns and school on remote learning and all these other paths that we attempted to do during the two years of the COVID pandemic has definitely impacted our students' abilities to perform. I have five kids in the school system. I have two of them that are graduating from high school this year, three of them that are matriculating out of the middle school to the high school next year or this year, at the end of this conclusion of this year. And I know from just observing the quality of work that they do and how they're performing, that they are struggling with in-person tuition today. So I'm interested in finding out, determining what the root causes are and what we can do to improve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiner. Mr. Cooper?
I guess my very top priority is the compensation for our teachers. They've been undercompensated for years. But closely behind that is the question of who does our school system serve? And it primarily serves the community to prepare our kids for productive futures and to make positive contributions to our economy and democracy. Every generation benefits from advances in science and mental health and physical health. Our schools should reflect the realities of today and tomorrow and not the generations that preceded them. It is our job to prepare them to be well-rounded and well-informed people, not closed or single-minded. To think our teachers choose this profession for indoctrination is really hard to understand. Why would I choose teaching for indoctrination when there are so many opportunities in other areas to do that and get much better pay and better hours? Like Marty, educating, feeding, and those in need in providing mental health and other health services are processes that are designed to serve our community.
That's it. Thank you. Does anybody have a comment to make about the idea of another candidate? Should we move on to the next question? Chris?
So I think that our school system serves first and foremost our students. I think that's a distinction that we need to maintain. I think Marty discussed it as well. The interests of those students and equipping those students to be prepared, to be ready and to enter the workforce in whatever shape they want to go into has to be the first and foremost goal of everything that we do, which is part of the reason why I have some issues on some of the other things that we're going to talk about specifically the school bond. So that's my one point that I'd like to make sure that we stay on focus on.
Thank you. Marty?
I just want to make, make the comment about how well we do as an educational system in Transylvania County. Our graduation rate at both Bivard High and Rossmann High is outstanding. The other issue that bothers me about this testing that was brought up by Chris about A, B, C, D, this is based on testing that varies a lot, as we all know as parents and teachers. There's a lot of variance there. The one that bothers me most is that growth is not counted as much as other parts of the testing score. Do you want to have a student who starts out making A+? And still makes an A+ at the end, but does not show any growth in that process? Or would you rather see a student who is a C student and becomes a B student? Because of growth. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Now, we're going to talk about school system capital needs. Mr. Griffin, you have stated that you are running for reelection in order to see the completion of the school bond projects. Why is that important to you?
I was elected eight years ago. And the first thing I was asked by the Transylvania Times as I walked out of our celebration of being elected was, what's the first thing you need to do? And I said, we need to start working on the school bond. Our schools need to be improved. We've got to start something. We spent four years researching, planning as a school board, and you were a part of that, Alice, and I appreciate that. And four years ago, it was past sixty percent to forty percent that the public of the county of Transylvania supported the school board's plans. COVID threw us a wrench. When everything's working, something always can happen to you. Because of that, we've had to make a readjustment. What I would like to see, in a perfect world, what I would like to see is we get financial support to go on and finish the project we started. Thank you.
Mr. Weiner? You have said that you want to ask the citizens for assurance that they still want to proceed with the school bond projects. You have also suggested that the school board should start over, and county leaders should ask voters to approve a new bond measure for over a hundred million dollars. What you said was lump it all together in one big package and get it done. Explain your reasoning and why you think that approach would be approved by the voters.
So one of the things that I did prior to doing this was I was a civil construction person. I have done multi-million dollar, multi-billion dollar projects all over the world. I can tell you that the owner of a project is the ultimate approver of the project. And in this case, the owner of the project is not the school board. The owner of the project is the citizens of Transylvania County, who are going to be funding the project. As such, if the school bond issue, if the money that comes out of the school bond is not being first and foremost allocated to improving the educational space for the students, then we have an issue. And from my understanding, the way the school bond is doing done, option one is not going to make any significant changes to the educational space for the students at Bivard High. As such, I think that we really should go back and say, because I voted for the school bond when I had the opportunity to. I'm very pro improving the environment for our students. I think that if more of the general population is aware of the fact that we are not exclusively or majority funding interest of educational space, then perhaps people would like to revisit that decision.
Thank you. Mr. Cooper? You have, yes, you have stated that moving ahead with the voter-approved bond projects is one of your top priorities. Tell us why.
Well.
Oh. How's that? Okay. I agree that the owners of, of the project are the citizens of Transylvania County. And when sixty percent of our voters vote in favor of something, I say that's our constituents speaking their mind. And to ignore them by saying, we don't think our voters realize what they were voting for, is a real insult to them. In my experience, in finance, I've never seen a municipal or a corporate bond issue take four years to get approved. I'm not saying that that's never happened, but I've not seen it in, in, in my days in the finance world. There's obviously stumbling blocks that are going on between the Board of Education and the county commissioners. I just believe that the Board of Education is, is responding to every request that our county commissioners make. And our commissioners are just giving us in, starting, ending points and not giving us any beginning points at all.
Unmute. Okay. I thought I did it too soon. Thank you, Paul. Both of you wanted, let me see who is supposed to? Mr. Griffin, you're first, then Mr. Weiner.
I just want to mention that we are going to complete in option one almost the entire Rossmann project. Not quite as much will be done at Bivard High, but there's two buildings that we need to replace. That's our cafeteria. That's our auxiliary gym. These are two very important things for education. We must remember the schools is also, as you mentioned, belong to the community. And these are areas that are used by the entire community. The cost of starting over and going somewhere in a different direction, we have to be real careful about because of the money we've already spent and the way the bond was issued. If you read the bond, it explained exactly what Transylvania County School Board was going to do. It was to build new and renovate at Bivard High, Rossmann High, and Rossmann Middle.
Chris?
Yeah, so again, I don't think that the citizens, I believe, the best way to phrase this is, I believe that the changes to the scope of work at Bivard High no longer reflect what the citizens were under the impression they were buying. And I would like to have the citizens have an opportunity to reevaluate the proposed scope to affirm that that's where they want to go. If the citizenry wants to build additional administrative space and rather than building classroom space, which is what the initial bond proposed, then that should be the citizens' input. I think it's significant enough that we should go back and validate that they are still getting what they thought they agreed to. Further, as I said, the interest should always be in the educational space of our students to improve their opportunities. The extension of the CTE wing was a critical component, and that's no longer happening at Bivard High.
Thank you. Moving on, discussion of school capital needs often turns to the question of consolidating Bivard High School and Rossmann High School. Commissioners have frequently brought this up. What is your opinion about consolidating Bivard High and Rossmann High? In your answer, state what kind of consolidation you're proposing. Building a new high school for everybody or busing the Rossmann High students to Bivard High School? Mr. Griffin, will you start us off?
I run a campaign, the last two times I've been elected, on community schools. The schools are the part of the community where not just the kids, but everybody comes together. Consolidation has been talked about, and you just mentioned two options. The option of busing students just to Bivard High or the option of building a new school. I'll give you a quick example. I've done some research on schools the size that we would need to build. And you must keep in mind, this is what you have to have to begin with. You must have, I believe it's fifty acres of land that the state, by state law, you have to have water. You cannot run a school on a well, so you have to be available water. You have to have sewage. You can't run a school this size on a septic tank. So you have to be able to bring that in. So you have all these concepts of building an excellent school with all the facilities. You're going to laugh a lot of people, but you have to have parking. You have to have athletic facilities. You have to have the best labs. And all of this, you know, you're talking about a figure just for one school. You may be talking about a figure of ninety million plus. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Mr. Weiner?
Thank you. So I'm kind of a party on this. I think that the school system represents a community space. It also creates a bit of an idea, identity of this is my school, especially in intramural sports and inner, you know, inner sporting activities between the teams. Also, it provides a great facility to the individual areas. We have a large county that's separated by a long distance with a very narrow space that we're actually able to build in because of land restrictions on national forests, et cetera. So I'm not exactly sure that I could be in favor of a consolidated school system, a single campus. As Marty said, it would be an incredibly expensive project. And it would be, if we did proceed with the school bond issue, that wouldn't be an optimal way spending of that money. Again, part of the reason why I think the school bond issue needs to be revisited to decide whether we want to accommodate a single high school facility or not. It would create space in the existing schools for expansion of their middle school programs, et cetera, and create space for elementary and pre-K. So there's a good opportunity there. It's something that really needs to be thought through. Sorry about extending my time.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Yeah, thank you. I think all issues that address planning for the future should be welcomed and discussed. We're here to act for today and plan for tomorrow, and that's our mission. Consolidation is a real multifaceted topic. As my friends here have said, where would it be located that it best serves both communities? Is it a new building? Where would the land be that meets all the requirements? How much it must, how much of it would, would it cost? These and many other questions have to be looked into before I could really say that one way or the other, if I feel consolidation should take place or how I feel it should take place. And I think it's important to understand that all issues should be addressed and looked at in mature ways. Nothing should be taboo. But the biggest thing is we need to start thinking out of the box when it comes to funding and our fundraising efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Chris?
Yes, thank you. So I'll be very brief in this one. One thing that would help me consider consolidation to be an acceptable or an excellent choice, rather, would be to include the Blue Ridge Community College campus into that consolidation plan because that would extend the CTE options for the students at the high school. So that would be something that I would definitely, if we were to talk about consolidation, would be to look at how we can incorporate Blue Ridge Community College space into it since they're asking for additional funds as well right now.
Thank you. Marty?
As I mentioned before, I've been a lifelong resident of Transylvania County. The people in this county may be the most supportive individuals in the state of North Carolina. Every school bond Every school bond in this county has passed. It's been brought before the voters. The only one that did not pass was to consolidate the high schools. Now, as I mentioned earlier, I'm a believer in community schools. I know the trend for a long time was consolidation, but now we're getting back to it's bigger, better. And everybody now that's building schools, if you look, they're building smaller schools. So I am a supporter of the schools where they are now. But if the voters vote that that's what they want, then I'll be supportive of that because we live in a democracy, the majority rules. So if the citizens of this county want consolidation, I just don't see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Paul?
Yeah, and I'd like to add to that and emphasize, I, I think that all of us feel this way, that our schools are active members of their local communities. And in rural communities, it's even much more important. I, I don't know, or I do know that especially in Rosman, the high school is the focus of everything that takes place. So the idea of consolidating into single larger schools in that respect can have a disadvantage, disadvantageous effect.
Thank you, Paul. And following up actually on something that you just said, Paul, you stated that it is incumbent upon the board to start aggressively and creatively looking for other revenue sources, especially ones that do not have to go through the commissioners for approval. We must start thinking outside the box. Can you elaborate on that, please?
Sure. It is time because money is tight across the nation and it's tight across the nation in all of our school systems. And we happen to be in a situation where not only is our school board partisan, but it's also does not have any fundraising capability out in the public in the way of taxation. So everything we have to do has to be approved by the county commission. And I think it's time to start investigating what other ways that we can bring funding in directly to the Board of Education, whether it's through private sector, whether it's through not-for-profit sector, whether it's through foundations. But it is time for us to pursue much more creative avenues. And if we don't pursue them, then we won't find out if they're even a possibility.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Mr. Griffin or Mr. Weiner, do you have a comment on that? Mr. Weiner?
Do we have an opportunity to respond to the question in the first place?
Well, you can if you want. Well, like this was my, I was like an individual question and then you guys, you'll each get an individual question.
Certainly, and I absolutely agree. My dad was the dean of finance at Brevard College for years. I believe that we should be establishing an endowment. There is absolutely no reason why we can't have private citizen donations into a private fund that we can use as an endowment to fund our school system long term. There, we should not have to rely on a tax base. There is a lot of wealth in this county, as you well know. And that is something that we should be looking at doing. There are other mechanisms that allow us to do things. And one thing, I think we should be talking to the state legislator about removing restrictions on things like hospitality taxes, hotel, you know, room tax, being able to use that information, use that fund source for something other than promoting the county yet again and just keeping that vicious cycle of spending income on marketing yet over and over and over again. That money comes into the county, it should be able to be used within the county the way the county wants to use it. Now, we need to change the legislator's opinion on that. And so that's one of the things that, as a school board representative, I would be actively working to attempt to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Marty, did you have a comment on that?
I just want to comment that if you study the constitution of North Carolina, you'll realize it's a public school system was set up by government. It's a government agency. I feel like the funding should come, setting an endowment, raise ninety million dollars to build a new school. I don't think that's, I just don't think that's right. The government should provide it. There's only two states in the union that will not allow school board to have the ability to set up a tax rate for building. If we had to get the, well, if we had the power, you know, we could raise money through taxation. And as soon as that building is complete, we no longer tax the people. We got to pay the tax down. We already seen that people in North Car, excuse me, in Transylvania County, they don't mind paying extra taxes. As soon as the bond was passed, you'll notice the commissioner raised everybody's tax rate instantly. And that money is in their account. It's a stand there. We've not had bonds issued, so until the bonds are issued to use that money for our building of our schools, it remains in their account. So I feel like that the system works. We just need to sit down and make the right decisions in the government areas that control finances for the school systems of North Carolina, not just Transylvania.
Thank you, Marty.
Yes. In the fifty-two years that I've been alive, I have very rarely seen tax rates go down once they've been imposed. So if the school board was able to directly tax the citizenry, it would do so, and it would probably not reverse that situation. It would probably continue to exacerbate the problem. So that's my opinion about taxing directly from the school board.
Yes, Paul.
And to even continue Chris's point is I hope people are well aware that the school bond has a seven-year life and we are now four years into it. If we go three more years and die on the vine, then we will have collected in excess of forty million dollars in additional taxation that no longer belongs to the school system. It belongs to the county commission. And Chris is right. It is not going to be funded back to our citizens.
Thank you, Paul. Am I still on? Okay. This is terrible.
We're getting there.
Yeah, we're getting there, little by little.
We'll have it all figured out.
We will. We will. Both Mr. Weiner and Mrs. Dalton have publicly expressed concerns about potential liberal indoctrination, including critical race theory and social emotional learning. Mr. Weiner, you have signs out that say education hashtag indoctrination. What does that mean? Define your terms.
Well, interestingly enough, the symbol is not a hashtag. It's a does not equal, which is, I've actually had a lot of people ask me about that. And my simple response would be that would suggest that the education system failed those people that didn't understand it because that mathematical symbol has been around for a very long time. So, I mean, my situation is really simple. Let's go back to performance of schools. If the school's focus is on reading, mathematics, writing skills, language skills, creative arts skills, continuing technical education skills, et cetera, then those students are going to be better prepared to enter the workforce. So I would like to ensure that our focus is in there. And when we're teaching history, we are teaching history in the context of a series of facts. I believe that we should be teaching all the facts, including the facts that we don't want to necessarily have to admit to. But I think that we should be teach, as my degree is in history and religious studies. And so I would look for our system to focus on history, civics, et cetera, rather than any other kinds of programs. Now, are we doing it? I don't know entirely. I have five students in the school system, so I have an opinion around it based upon their experiences. Thank you.
Your thoughts on indoctrination? Understanding that so many of the teachers in our school system are homegrown.
Again, I, the idea that, that our underpaid, overworked teachers are getting into this profession, either because they have been indoctrinated or they are wanting to indoctrinate, is just hard for me to accept and, and to understand. I think if you put twenty people in a room and ask them what CRT is, you're going to get twenty different reasons. But what I can tell you is in Transylvania County, our students are being taught history and the, the dark sides and the good sides and the middle sides. And in order to become informed citizens of the future, they need to be well-informed on both sides of all issues. And that, that includes race, it includes gender, it includes civics. We need and we are developing and need to develop even better, more well-rounded students.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Indoctrination.
As I mentioned earlier, you know, our teachers are instructed through this, basically the state government, our course of study. And I was told one time by our professor that education has one purpose, and that is to teach people to think for themselves, to do what's right. So if you restrict all areas of thought, of all areas of teaching, you're then indoctrinating people not to be good citizens and serve our democracy. Sometimes, as has been mentioned earlier, what we want to hear, in particular in history, is not good news. But I'm sitting here and I'll tell you, even though we have differences and problems and everything, I'm proud to be a citizen in this country. I know this is the best place to live. And I want kids to be able to think when they graduate from wherever, whatever profession they go into, that they're thinkers and they're good leaders. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. I actually have a question from the chat, somebody who's watching. They wanted to know if you have an example of widespread indoctrination in Transylvania County schools from your own experience?
I think the term widespread is probably a poor choice for me to try, attempt to respond to. And one of the things that I was thinking about yesterday, the term indoctrination is a loaded word. Okay? I, like Marty said, America's, having lived outside of it for so long, I can tell you unequivocally, America is the greatest place on the planet. Okay, no doubts about that. I know from living in Dubai that over a hundred thousand people apply every year, Iranians exclusively through the Dubai consulate to come to this country as citizens, to become citizens and move here. So I know there's a lot of people that want to come here. We have a flood of people coming across the border for the exact same reason, opportunity. So, but I do believe that we should be encouraging our students to see America for how great it is as opposed to trying to cut it apart. And so sensitivity on how we convey that instruction and that teaching is probably something that we need to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on. Parent involvement is very important to any successful, effective public school system. What are some specific things you would recommend to encourage parent involvement in Transylvania County schools? Mr. Weiner, we'll start with you.
Thank you. So as I've said on, on this campaign trail, I would love to see parents involved as teaching assistants. I would like to see parents involved in extracurricular activities in the school system. I would like to see the parent-teacher organization expanded and enriched. I would like to see it becoming a means of funding some of the activities within the school. I welcome parents in the classroom, in the facility, helping students, mentoring students, acting as lecturers, guest lecturers coming in to provide perspective on life experience. So I think that the best thing that we can do is have parents involved in the school system. Further to that, I would say that the best thing that we can do is have the school system be supportive of families and ensure that students are not encouraged to keep secrets from their parents and from their schools, from their, from the rest of their family unit. So.
Thank you. And Mr. Cooper?
Yeah. I, I believe that there are numerous ways to expand a parent's role in the school system. As Chris said, expanding our PTAs. We have a lot of knowledgeable people in our community that are parents or have been parents, and they have a lot that they can contribute to the school system and to our students. So bringing them into the classroom in that format, I think, is a very acceptable thing to do. I, I don't think it's a good idea to bring parents into the classroom simply as observers because they will add another level of stress on our teachers that our teachers really don't need. But I do think there are many creative ways that we can get our parents more involved in our school systems and our teachings.
Thank you. Marty?
What's, what's really neat about this, everything that Chris and Paul mentioned, we're already doing. We have volunteers, we have parents, we have active groups, it's booster clubs, active groups. The only thing that I will, I will state very adamant about is I do not want teachers in the classroom. The classroom is hectic enough for a teacher without having parents show up. And then those kids say, well, my parents here, I can do what I want to. That's what goes through my mind. So I do not want to put that stress on the teachers. If you want to put somebody extra in the classrooms, then we need to get teachers' assistants back in the classrooms. And if you want somebody in the classroom from K to twelve and put a teacher assistant in all grade levels. The State of North Carolina General Assembly has cut to the bone on teacher assistance. So if you want somebody in the classroom, let's put somebody in there qualified, trained, and can help that teacher. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Another one for you, Mr. Griffin. You have stated that we have excellent school resource officers, and there is no reason to consider putting guns in the hands of teachers. You were also present at the parents' meeting a couple of years ago when our superintendent and our sheriff, David Mahoney, strongly opposed arming teachers. What are your thoughts?
Am I muted? Okay. I have a little computer problem right here, but I just want people to realize that we have a very well-trained staff of SROs. The sheriff has been very supportive. I don't think we need to arm our teachers. First of all, the majority of them do not want that, do not feel safe. Somebody made a comment to me, if they're carrying a fire, what, forty-eight hours of training? Can you imagine somebody using a weapon with just that little bit of training? Can you imagine a teacher aiming at somebody and missing and hitting a kid? So these are all scary things. I do want to thank the, our SROs. I've made the comment several times, and I don't mind making it here. I can promise you, I know several of the SROs, I've called them. They play ball for me. I can promise you, they would not wait an hour and a half before they breached and saved our kids' lives. That's how trusting I am. So school safety is very important. I do not want to arm teachers. That is unsafe, dangerous. Let's stay with our plan that we have. Keep training, keep improving what we're doing now. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Mr. Cooper?
Yeah, I, I'd. Yeah, I'd, I'd kind of like to approach this from a little bit different perspective. I'm against guns in the classroom, but picture this scenario. Uh, most school shootings are committed by students. So now we've really helped them out by placing the weapons in the classroom. They just need to know the location and how to access. And then just think about a teacher that you thought highly of in your past, uh, and picture them in a shooting incident. Uh, many school shooters will pull the fire alarms upon entry to bring the students out. And now a teacher has to figure out, i- is it a fire alarm? Do I need to take the students out? Or is it a, a shooting situation and keeping the students in? And in the middle of that chaos, they have to access their weapon, load it, take the safety off, and remember their short-term training in this stress-filled scenario. If the shooters in the classroom or their halls are going to be surrounded by, uh, by other students. So now you've got the pressure on, can I make that accurate shot and not hurt anybody else or kill anybody else? And think of what the liability that that would bring, because we know it would be followed by lawsuits. I, I'd like to add real quick.
Oh, okay.
Let the professionals do what they were trained to do over a much longer period in time and not in twenty-four to seventy-two hours. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Weiner?
I will support a deputized citizen acting in the school system.
Any other comments? So. Gotta find my next thing. What time is it?
The time is seven fifty-one.
Seven fifty-one, folks. Oh, okay, Mr. Weiner.
Yes.
You call yourself the Christian constitutional conservative candidate. What does that mean? I mean particularly, what does it mean to advertise that you're Christian in the context of serving on a public school board?
Well, my faith simply dedicates that everything I do should start from an act of love. Um, so as a Christian, that's the first place that I will look at. I'm looking at these students as people that I am called to serve, because God says to call others, serve others before you serve yourself. Whether you believe in God or not, I think that paradigm shift is very significant. So that's what I mean by, I'm a Christian. My faith predicates the direction by which I will serve the community as a whole. As to a constitutional conservative, you know, I'm, I'm a constitutionalist. I believe that the Constitution is one of the finest documents of jurisprudence ever written. It is an amazing document. It sets forward a whole set of guidelines and aspirations of how the country is to become, as opposed to what it is. And I believe that as a conservative, I think that we, by saying that, I'm saying that we should be looking back toward the Declaration of Independence, the Federalist Papers, the Constitution of the United States, the writings and uh, lectures of our former presidents to guide our path forward.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Cooper, do you have any comments?
Uh, my only comment is that we were all put on this earth to be treated as equals and to be heard as equals. And we are a variety of religions. And there is not one single religion that should be focused upon in our classrooms any more than any other religion. Uh, we should be learning about all of them. And I think that our future is moving forward, not looking backwards. And moving forward is progress. And so I, I think that observing social changes in our country um, and in our world for that matter, uh, should be things that dictate uh, what kind of changes we should or should not be making in our school systems.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin?
I just want to make a, a few comments. Uh, I agree with Chris, the Constitution probably the greatest document that's ever been written. And it was written to change, to become a progressive document. I want to tell a story about Sears in Asheville in downtown. I went in there when I was probably seven or eight years old. And when I was in Sears, there were two water fountains. One said white, one said colored. And I did not understand that. I asked my father, he said, well, that's the way it is. Well, I don't like the way it was. Today, we have progressed from that. Today, we're all the same, and we must work together to continue to make this nation the nation that it is. I'm proud to say that Transylvania County Schools were the first school system in the southeastern United States to integrate. I had a unique experience when I, uh, I graduated from Marsh Hill College, now Marshall University. And when I entered Marsh Hill in, not, in the fall of nineteen sixty-nine, I was, I, I'll, I'll say I'm shocked or surprised. I was in school with students there that had never attended school with black students, and I had since I was in the eighth grade. And it was shocking to me. So I just want to add that we're a progressive nation. We cannot look backwards. We need to take the Constitution and guide it towards who we are now and where we're going in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Let's move on to mental health, because we're kind of running out of time, and that's an important topic. Student mental health is a big concern in schools across the country. In Transylvania County Schools, three students committed suicide last year. How can the school board effectively address mental health concerns in our schools? Mr. Cooper, you have a mental health background and you're involved with the TC Strong Group. Why don't you lead off on this one?
Okay, I, I think we have really not addressed the mental health needs of our students very well at all. Uh, the pandemic really threw a ratchet in, into the whole process. But suicide rates and suicide attempts were going up even before the pandemic. And not only do we have the pandemic, but we've got all of the political divisiveness uh, that's taking place and so many other factors that are preying on the mental health of our students. Um, suicide rates and suicide attempts across the nation are up close to thirty percent. And requests for mental health services by students is up well over thirty percent. We need to hire and retain more mental health professionals and counselors in our schools. And we can't do that by just saying we need more mental health professionals. We need to find a way to do this, because our students are suffering miserably because of all the pressures that are upon them and either don't always have the outlets to talk about it at home or even the desire sometimes. So um, monies need to be found to be able to retain, bring in and retain more mental health professionals.
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Weiner?
Student suicide and mental health are issues that pain me personally, because I know some of those students. My children know some of those students. I, we know students that are currently struggling in the school system. Schools are not healthcare providers in the classical sense. They are permitted certain activities like vaccinations, et cetera, uh, dental hygiene activities. Um, I would much more prefer to have a stronger county health capability uh, available through the county health system and have referrals for students to that facility. Uh, whether it's professionally trained, professionally monitored, uh, nurse practitioners, uh, social workers, counselors, et cetera. Those facilities are going to be much more conducive to working with those students than in-school act, activities. I think the teachers should have great avenues, as well as uh, administration staff should have wide avenues to getting access to that. And as the county and as the city, we should be funding those at a larger level than we currently are. I don't think that necessarily hiring more direct staff in the school system is the right way to go, because it takes that resource away from other people in the county that need it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty?
Mental health has been a problem in our schools since I first was elected eight years ago. We have uh, increased the number of people working with uh, these individuals. And the pandemic really uh, threw us a curveball. So much so that the federal government gave us money and set up positions. Now, these positions are beginning to end, and I think in about twelve months. So if they were so good and would be so helpful, why are they going to disappear? If we need them now, why will we not need them in the future? And as Chris mentioned, and as Paul mentioned, the funding now has to come from the state and the county commissioners for local jobs, and these are local jobs. So if we want to continue these, there's people that have the funding, need to step up. Again, we have these jobs now. They're helping. What's going to happen when they disappear? Will be nobody in those positions, and that's scary to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Paul?
Yeah, um, I absolutely agree that the county should have more expanded mental health services. Um, just for anybody, go try to find a therapist right now, and you're going to have a difficult time doing it. But keep in mind that our students spend almost the majority of their daytime hours in our schools. So they are familiar with the teachers, and they are familiar with the mental health professionals there and any healthcare professionals that are there. So oftentimes, mental health needs are immediate, but also the, the students are in a comfortable, safe environment. And their teachers, their mental health professionals that are there on hand are sometimes the most comfortable people for them to come to, to, to immediately start opening up.
Thank you. Mr. Weiner, you wanted to comment?
Safety of our students has to be one of our highest level priorities. But I can tell you, in having listening sessions with the community that this body represents, um, there is a lot of bullying going on in the school system, and that bullying is not being properly addressed. I believe that the, a number of students' complaints about bullying have been um, suppressed, hidden, swept under the rug. Um, and I know from my own experience, from the reports that my children have provided me, that this is still an ongoing problem. So I'm not entirely sure that I'm comfortable with saying that these are places where the students necessarily feel safe, which is why I'd like to get them into a professional facility away from campus, where the campus can't influence them.
Thank you. Marty had a question.
I just would like to add to this, that I read this, and I'm not really completely researched it, but it sounds pretty accurate. From the day that a student enters uh, our school system in kindergarten to the day they graduate, they spend sixteen percent of their lifetime in the schools. So outside of that, outside of that, there needs to be help in other areas. And I think this is not just our, the school's problem. This is a problem for everyone. As we mentioned earlier, uh, working with parents, uh, churches, working with students, uh, of some type of faith-based, whereas Chris mentioned, Paul mentioned, you can go and talk to someone you trust. Uh, I disagree a little bit with Chris about sometimes your teacher, your coach, might be that person you trust, because you cannot, because of your situation at home, may not be trustful. So there's, there's more than just the school system's problem. Everybody's sitting in this room, there's not many of us in this room, but everybody out there watching, it's all of our problem. This isn't just Transylvania County, this is statewide, nationwide. And we've all got to work together. I don't know the answer. I'm not, I'm not trained in that field. But I do know the problems that students do have. And we've got to work together to solve this problem as a community.
Thank you, Marty. Paul, I think you win then.
Yeah, um, I, I totally agree with Chris that, that bullying is an issue. Um, but it's a two-sided issue. Uh, it's a student that is bullying another student or groups of other students is obviously a troubled student. So I, I think that bullying is something for the bullier that should be addressed in the school system and can be addressed in the school system. And also bullying is a causative factor for many students to have parts of their, their own mental health issues. So I, I do believe having boots on the ground for mental health professionals is, is a very, very important thing in our school systems. And it's important enough that we need to find the ways to find, to find the funding, to bring more in before the funds run out.
Chris?
Yeah, and as Marty said, coaches, teachers are great places to start. But as Marty said, he's also not professionally trained as a counselor. So I think that teachers should be encouraged to refer students to professionally trained people who can assist them. And absolutely, bullies need to be addressed in the school system. Administration needs to take a position that discipline is going to be something that is maintained in the classroom. Um, if that means removing a student from the classroom or potentially removing them from the campus, that's what we have to do. We have got to re-establish the fact that the classroom is a place of education. It's a class of, place to facilitate education. And there are students in there who actually seek to learn. And they should not be have that educational opportunity disrupted by bullies, either in the classroom or in the hallways, in the lunchroom, in the gym, in the locker rooms, or anywhere else.
Clearly an important topic. Marty, finish it up for us.
I'd just like to make the comment that uh, I feel like that the bullying question, we do address it in the school system. It's not something that we ignore. The problem being that, that I see is that we have got to find a way, as both have mentioned, where we can help both the bully and the people being bullied. Uh, because of being, because of serving on the school board right now and because of confidentiality, I don't want to add a lot of things, except that we're working on this. I mean, it's, it's an ongoing problem. We're working on this. But again, a lot of this happens off the school grounds. I agree with Chris, I agree with, uh, with Paul, but a lot of this goes on in social media that we have absolute no control over, off- But a lot of this goes on in social media that we have absolute no control over off-campus. We do the best we can on campus. When it happens and we know about it, we take action and we do remove people, uh, from the situation. We try to make sure that the bully, the one being bullied, they're not around each other. We do remove them from school if it's serious enough. So we are aware of this, we are working on it. But again, that's another one there where the community needs to help us, parents, the community, because social media, that's our biggest problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. We, it is now ten minutes after eight. And so we're, I had a lot more questions. I love all this stuff. Um, but we're gonna go to our closing statements. And, uh, Mr. Cooper, would you like to do the first closing statement? You have two minutes for your closing statement.
I never like to go first, but I will. Um, I think now is the time for us to start making some radical changes. But radical changes in the form of our communications. Um, we're all rational and communicative capable human beings. And our children are our most important asset. And our teachers are, quite frankly, they're guiding lights. And it is time for us to first begin to deal with issues first from a position of compassion and then reintroducing, uh, the ability to be cooperative, collaborative and to compromise. Uh, we are in a time, uh, both in our community and in our nation where divisiveness seems to be the, the, the most popular way of, of dealing with issues. Um, I read the other day that, um, if you read the news, if you don't look at the news and listen to the news, you're uninformed. If you listen to the news, you're misinformed. And I think that's so often the case. And there are so many things that we don't have control over, uh, oftentimes, like students' access to social media and what kind of impact that it has on them. But we have an audience of students for what you said, sixteen thousand hours a year?
Lifetime.
Lifetime, excuse me. Um, sixteen thousand hours a lifetime. And so we've got a responsibility to service all of their needs. And we have a responsibility to let our teachers and staff know that we are supportive of them and all of their efforts. And, and I'm not sure that that's the way our teachers are feeling now. So I hope that, uh, well, one, I appreciate the opportunity and I hope that I can gain your confidence and your support and vote for me on November eighth.
Thank you, Paul. Chris, your turn.
Yes. So thank you again for hosting this event. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here. Um, I can tell you that this has been a very pleasurable experience. Um, it demonstrates a lot of your care and concern and compassion and interest in what's going on, especially at the local level. So again, thank you for that. Again, I would like to say that my primary focus is to make sure that our school system is performing at the level of our investment, that our kids are performing and are being educated to the best, highest degree that they can. Um, I believe that there is room for improvement in that. We can do that by, by having academic, sorry, by having administrative people expecting the highest level of performance from our students, encouraging growth and rewarding that growth. Because obviously a C student who becomes a B student needs to be complimented on that. Um, I also believe that we need greater transparency on what happens in the classroom. The one thing that has come out of the experience of COVID and the remote learning is that we've seen a lot of stuff that is being taught to our students that some parents, many parents are not entirely comfortable with. And as such, I think that we need to make sure that we can address that. One way to ensure that is to get those little Chromebooks out of the classroom and have educational experience be broader than just random on-air content that teachers choose to bring into the classroom. I think that the, the county should have greater control over the content in the classroom. Because at the end of the day, the classroom serves the community as a whole. It serves those students and should be reflective of the interests of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Marty, bring it home.
I find it very interesting that, uh, we've talked about the use of the computers in classrooms now. I remember eight years ago when I was elected, there was a big move with, uh, computerized charter schools. That was the way the world was going. Uh, there was no need for public school. And I always made the statement, and I know Alice did too, she was on the board. You know, yes, this is a tool to help us teach. You cannot replace a classroom teacher. I agree with you with that. But what has happened to us is when the pandemic hit, everybody realized that we were right. This is not the answer. Moms and dads, you know, they've come up to me and said, dolly, we just don't know how hard it is on teachers. I said, well, I've been telling you a long time. I remember when we went to remote learning on snow days with First County State, North Carolina. And I remember mother coming up to me one day, we'd had a big snow and we'd been out about three days. And she walked up to me and said, Marty, when are we going back to school? It's killing me trying to keep up with the remote learning. So the teacher is the center of everything going on. Again, I have to emphasize, that may be the only person that's trusted. But let me go one step further. Think about this, how important all staffing is. The first person kids see in the morning is their bus driver and the last person they see in the afternoon. That bus driver can bring in a lot of information. They can read a kid if they're having problems. Again, we talk about feeding the kids, the staff in our cafeterias, uh, our administrative staff, custodians. It's just amazing how many people we, not just teachers, we owe a lot of money to these people because they're not working for a whole lot. We've got a long way to go in education and I believe in term limitation. I was only going to serve two terms, but I decided I was running a third term because my parents, my teachers, my coaches never taught me to quit on something and there's things that we need to improve. And I want to be part of it the next four years in this county. Thank you. And also, I gotta say this, even if I run overtime. Again, I want to, as Chris and Paul said, I want to thank the NVO HCP for doing this. This proves the Constitution works and a democracy works. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. And I really appreciate all of you coming and being so cordial and interested in what each other are saying and speaking your minds in a mature adult kind of way. Thank you very much for doing that and for kind of making it fun to, um, ask questions.
I have the sweat running down the back of my ass.
And Tommy is going to finish us up. If you can get back in this chair.
Um, can I say something? I've got.
Sure.
Thank you, Alice, as a moderator.
Oh.
Excellent job.
My first time out.
Uh, again, uh, uh, copying Alice, I'd like to thank the candidates. Uh, I'd like to thank you for your open, honest and informative comments and responses. Uh, I found it refreshing. Uh, I'd like to thank, uh, Mayor Maureen Kopeloff, the before City Council for allowing us the use of the City Council chambers. Uh, we are greatly appreciative. I'd also like to thank John Rich, uh, for attending, reported with the Transylvania Times. Thank you. Uh, this was, I hope to those on the Zoom link, open, informative and, uh, giving you a in-depth look, uh, at, uh, who you're gonna be voting for. Uh, and, uh, making a, uh, informed decision from these candidates' responses, which I thought was very good. Again, thank you all and have a good evening.